Welcome, everybody. Today is Tuesday, September 2nd. This is a regular meeting of the San Rafael City Council. I'll request the city clerk to call the roll.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Present.
Councilmember Hill.
Present.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Present.
Mayor Kate.
Present. All five of us are here this evening. We met in closed session prior, and I will invite the city attorney to report out on that.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. No reportable action was taken in closed session.
Thank you. So, good evening, everyone, and welcome. And whether you're here with us in person or tuning in from home, thank you for being a part of tonight's meeting. I want to start, as I always do, by acknowledging the hard work and dedication of our city staff. They are the ones making San Rafael moving, keep moving forward, often behind the scenes and often managing multiple pressing issues. I'm continually impressed by their commitment to the community, and I know the full council shares my deep appreciation for all that they do. We especially appreciate their dedication in times of crisis, like the fire that occurred recently in the Canal neighborhood. While we're proud of the response from our first responders, we are heartsick at the loss of life and saddened at the displacement of residents. The city manager will provide an additional update during her city manager report. As part of my comments this evening, I want to highlight the September issue of Marin Magazine, because I want to draw your attention to the article entitled "Ode to San Rafael." So, there's a whole article here that talks about all the great things that you can do in downtown San Rafael. It is so wonderful to have our beloved city recognized for all the fantastic things that we have going on in our downtown. So, a shout out to Marin Magazine for highlighting how awesome our city is and how there are great things to do downtown. So, check it out. As you know, or if you've been at a previous meeting, we include a land acknowledgement before we get to the business portion. This statement is in addition to the work that we do with the tribe on an ongoing basis. We thank the original caretakers of this land. San Rafael is traditionally home to the Coast Miwok people, many of whom today are tribal citizens of the Federated Indians of Great Rancheria, and we honor their continuing involvement and stewardship practices that benefit us all. Now, the city clerk will describe how people can participate in tonight's meeting.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Tonight's meeting is being recorded and streamed live to YouTube for members of the public wishing to provide public comment, displayed on the podium and the projector as a timer to help you stay within your two-minute timeframe. You're invited, though not required, to say where you live, or if you're from outside of Centerfell. Viewers may request reasonable accommodation to provide public comment virtually. For more information about that, or if you're experiencing any technical difficulties, you can email me at city.clerk@cityofcenterfell.org. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn to the city manager for the city manager's report.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council and the community. A couple of quick procedural items. We did remove two items from the agenda. I wanted to acknowledge that. The affordable housing item and the park impact fee. So, upon further review, we feel it is premature to bring these two items forward for a council decision, that we need more time to conduct outreach and have discussions with the developers on these items, which we'll be doing so over the next few weeks. And I will keep you posted on when these items will be coming forward. I've asked Chief Spiller and Chief Roman, I was going to say Abe, Chief Roman, to provide the council and the community with an update regarding the fire in the canal. I'm going to say a few words about that first, and then I have additional comments of my report, so it will come back to me before we proceed. In the early hours of the August 25th devastating fire, our community witnessed a heartbreaking tragedy. But in the wake of that tragedy, we also witnessed the extraordinary strength of the human spirit, as the canal neighborhood revealed its unique and united community character amid a loss that's difficult to put into words. First, we are heartbroken by the loss of two beloved members of our community. Our deepest condolences go out to their families and friends. Pleased to know that we stand with you in this sorrow. As your city manager, I'm always proud of the San Rafael's first responders, who in this case acted with speed and precision, ensuring the safety of the 55 community members who are now displaced as a result of the fire. In a strong showing of mutual aid, 10 fire departments from across Marin, as well as the Marin County Sheriff's Office, arrived on scene to assist, bringing additional crews and resources to bolster San Rafael's efforts, which were critical in containing the blaze and saving lives. Within hours, the Red Cross Canal Alliance, Marin Community Foundation, and the County of Marin stepped in to deliver resources to the displaced residents and to provide them with much-needed comfort. Dedicated city staff, everyone in this room and their team, I would say, worked tirelessly to garner heavy equipment to stand up a critical incident command post, while others stood up a shelter within a matter of hours, ensuring displaced families had a safe place to go that very night. Meanwhile, neighbors, businesses, and nonprofits filled in the gaps in ways big and small by bringing donations, opening their wallets, and opening their hearts. It was a pretty remarkable experience. To the neighbors who risked everything to save their neighbor's lives, to our public safety first responders, and to our partners across Marin County, you have my deepest gratitude. You have shown us what it truly means to be a united and resilient community. There's so many people that I could name right now, and I fear naming anyone, because I would leave someone out, and I would take all night. So, and I don't, we have a lot of important business to get to, but I do want to particularly appreciate Assistant City Manager Angela Robinson-Pignone, who was acting city manager while I was out on medical leave for a few days, who just stepped up and really managed this crisis and this city in an impeccable way. So, I just really want to call Angela out, and for the rest of you that I didn't name individually, know that deep gratitude for you as well. So, I'll turn it over to the chiefs.
Good evening, Mayor Kate, Vice Mayor Bushy, councilmembers. I want to begin by acknowledging the tragic loss of our two community members on the devastating fire that occurred in the early morning hours in the Canal neighborhood. I will extend our despite condolences to the family, to the friends, and to the neighbors. At approximately 5:37 a.m., San Rafael Fire and Police were dispatched. Reports of a structural fire were residents trapped inside. The initial response included four engines, two ladder trucks, and ambulances, two battalion chiefs. San Rafael police officers were first on scene and immediately started assisting in rescues and evacuations. Given the volume of calls and severity of the situation, the incident was quickly upgraded to a second alarm, bringing additional resources of four additional engines, another ladder truck, and fire boats in San Rafael, and other paramedic unit. When crews arrived, they encountered heavy fire conditions on the second and third floors. Multiple residents had already jumped from the upper-story windows into some parking lot, and others into the canal. Crews initiated immediate search and rescue alongside fire suppression. Firefighters attempted to do an aggressive interior attack, but were quickly forced into transition to defensive strategy due to intense fire behavior and rapidly deteriorating structural integrity. Many of my folks fell to the floor trying to make their way up there to defect the rescues and stuff, and they were caught by the railings on there, and their partners being able to pull them out there. As it became evident that multiple individuals had sustained injuries, SRFD declared a multi-casual incident, bringing in additional ambulances. Patients were rapidly triaged, treated, and residents were moved to safe location under the SRPD guidance. Tragically, by midday, two residents remained unaccounted for, and our efforts shifted toward recovery and investigation. At the same time, our community response was swift. I contacted Deputy Director Quinn Gardner. She quickly arrived on scene. She led the sheltering operation, activating the Alboro Center, Community Center. Once again, SRPD solved, residents were able to be transported to the fires, from the fire scene to the shelter, where they received meals, showers, clothing, and case management service, which this would not have been possible without the contributions of over 12 local community partners and agencies. And I want to especially acknowledge our library and recreation staff for their critical role in supporting and organizing the shelter space. As operations progressed, it became evident that the structure was heavily damaged and its structural integrity was severely compromised. SRFD then requested assistance from the Marin County Fire Department Urban Search and Rescue Task Force, which provided 20 additional personnel to assist in building shoring, debris removal, and recovery alongside our San Rafael firefighters. In addition to that, we brought two K-9, excuse me, three K-9 dogs, one from the Oakland Fire Department, and two from the Menlo Park Fire District. This portion of the operation was labor-intensive, high-risk, and requiring close coordination to ensure safety and maintain integrity of the investigation. With all this, in the face of a mixed strategy, we also saw the best of San Rafael. Our first responders, city staff, community partners, worked alongside by side seamlessly and selflessly. This incident is a sobering reminder of how quickly lives can be changed, but it also reinforces the strength and resilience of our community and the power of a coordinated response. To every department, police, Public Works, Library and Recreation, City Manager's Office, and to our dedicated community partners, a sincere thank you. The tireless commitment and swift action date the essential groundwork for long recovery ahead. I am deeply grateful for your service, your resilience, and your unwavering support during this critical time. Thank you.
Good evening, Mayor Kate, members of the council. Thank you, Chief Roman. As Chief Roman has so effectively communicated, this incident was highly in common for San Rafael. It was very dynamic in nature. Both the San Rafael Police Department and the San Rafael Fire Department are incredibly saddened by the loss of life and for the injuries sustained by victims involved in this incident. On that early morning, as public safety staff responded to the reported incident, fire conditions were significant. Several calls were reported to 911, and our first responders and 911 dispatchers were fully committed to the incident overall. Public safety staff, both police and fire, coordinated efforts with the rescue of victims, coordination of medical aid, suppression of the fully-involved apartment complex, and evacuation of the complex as well as surrounding structures. As police staff worked with our fire department counterparts, we established, we early, very early on, established unified command to coordinate the incident as our first responders progressed through the phases of the incident, as Chief Roman has shared, including on-scene operations and suppression, recovery and investigation, sheltering and resident support, as well as community coordination and collaboration. San Rafael PD, along with San Rafael Fire, with all of our allied agency partners and federal investigative resources, the ATF was very involved in the management of the scene. We all worked around the clock to develop investigative leads, to collect and preserve evidence, to facilitate interviews for all who potentially had information to coordinate this investigation. The details surrounding this incident are being investigated, and while the painstaking process of managing the scene, processing the scene, collecting evidence from the scene, while that's all concluded, our investigation work continues. Our investigation continues to determine the cause of the incident. While we're not at all prepared at this moment to discuss any specific details as it relates to the nature of the investigation, we want the city council to know, and we want our entire community to know, that we are tirelessly pursuing all leads in the course of investigating this incident. While this incident has taken a toll on those directly impacted, it's clearly taken a toll on the community overall. Our first responders, while professional and always ready to answer the call, have also been impacted by this tragic event. All of us in the police department and the fire department, along with all of our city staff, are appreciative for how our community came together and how our community partners have come together in the course of this incident to support one another, particularly those most impacted by this event. I'm very grateful to my peer Public Safety Chief, and I'm also grateful to my peer directors, Public Works, Library and Recreation, as Chief Roman had mentioned. It was a true collaboration, a true team effort, and everybody stepped up to support the operation. Both Chief Roman and I are grateful to our respective teams and we're respective to the community who all came together to be there for one another, for those who needed it the most. So, thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit of the experience of our teams. And I just want to punctuate my comment with overall gratitude for all of our city staff and those amazing people in the community who stepped up.
Thank you both very much.
Could you speak to what's on the screen?
Yes, thank you. So, there's been a tremendous outpouring of contribution. If the community or anyone wants to make a donation, both Marin Community Foundation and the Canal Alliance are accepting financial donations, and those QR codes are up there because the websites are like tiny.donatecanal5. It's just very, it's very difficult to read, so Walter put together a slide, so you could take a screenshot if you'd like. And just double down on the gratitude and the extended city team for the responses. It is a really special community and special team, so thank you. Okay, it's hard to move on from that, but we have other things. So, I wanted to introduce Priya Nixon in the audience, so just a quick hi. She's a senior management analyst, newly hired in the city manager's office. She comes with a ton of experience, particularly in city manager offices, so we're really happy to have her here. So, I just wanted to introduce her, and thank you for helping me with this slide. We have a couple of proclamations on the agenda tonight that I felt is important to speak to for Suicide Prevention Month, and I want to thank Kara and Mario, who are going to give a brief presentation tonight about Suicide Prevention Month. I just feel like it's so important to recognize how deeply this issue affects our community, and just remind us all how important mental health is, how much it matters, and by reducing stigma and talking about it, we can create a community where everyone feels safe to seek help. Chief Spiller just spoke to the support of those most impacted, our dispatchers, the folks who are on scene. These are traumatic events also for our first responders, and the support and the mental health support that they have, both peer and professional clinicians, is exceptional, and I would say a model in public safety. And so, suicide impacts people from all walks of life, and many suffer in silence. So, we're grateful to our local agency partners who provide direct mental health services and behavioral health for their vital work in supporting those who are in crisis. We have a safe team who operates all across the city, and we see significant calls. We get a breakdown of the categories of the kind of calls they're responding to, and it's somewhere around about 10%. Don't quote me on that, but not insignificant amount of calls that are coming in for requests for support around suicidality. So, tonight, as we, sorry, we honor those we've lost to suicide and stand with their families and friends tonight. So, again, thank you both for being here. We'll get to your presentations in a minute. I also just wanted to appreciate and acknowledge Cecilia Zamora, who's in the audience, who's here to speak to Hispanic Heritage Month, where we honor the rich culture, history, and contributions of the Hispanic and Latino community here in San Rafael, who play a vital role in shaping our culture, our identity, and our economy and our spirit. So, I'm going to talk a little bit about some more staff recognition. Two departments in the last month have had staff receive really high honors in their field, so I'm going to start with Public Works. Two of our Public Works team members were recognized at the American Public Works Association Northern California Chapter Staff Appreciation Awards Luncheon for their outstanding work. The criteria for these awards are professionalism, leadership, innovation, employment achievement, great customer service, and community service, and sustainability. So, the Staff of the Year for Public Fleet is our very own Gerardo Paredes, and then Ryan Montez is Manager of the Year for the Public Right of Way. So, these are really, really big deal, and we're really proud of them, and thank you, April, for your leadership in making sure our people get the accolades they deserve. Additionally, San Rafael Fire Department, there were several members of the department and medical team who recently were recognized by the California Emergency Medical Services Authority for outstanding service in the field of emergency medical care. These statewide honors recognize exceptional dedication, leadership, and contributions to emergency medical response. So, firefighter/paramedic Marissa Nieto Gomez and Graham Winkleman both received an EMS Cross Medal, and then our medical professionals, Katie Pennell and Dr. Jordan Sacks, both received an EMS distinguished service, one distinguished service medal, and then Dr. Jordan Sacks is an EMS Clinical Excellence Medal. So, wanted to really celebrate those honors, and we'll have that information up on the city's website, so we can celebrate that across the community. Couple of upcoming events. Ember Stomp is coming up on September 6th at the Marin County Civic Center Fairgrounds. It's from 10 to 4. It's free. It's a focus on wildfire education and climate resilience focus this year. There's like hands-on exhibits, live demos. Quinn does an amazing job out there with the Kid Zone and teaching people how to be more resilient and fire prevention, wildfire prevention. We've got Movies in the Park coming up, which are also free. So, Friday, September 12th, from 7:30 to 9:00 at Peacock Gap is Paddington in Peru. And then, we've got the Wild Robot on Friday, September 26th, from 6:45 to 8:45 at Girlstall Park. The city's park and recreation website has more information and more details. There's a couple more in October, but we'll speak to those at the next council meeting. We've got Second Friday Art Walk coming up on September 12th from 5:00 to 8:00 downtown, and then finally, West End Block Party Friday, September 12th, 12 to 5:00 downtown San Rafael from Streets F to G. Thank you.
And Porch Fest is coming up.
And Porch Fest is September 6th.
It's in my calendar. 21st.
21st.
And the Girlstall Park neighborhood.
Thank you.
Fantastic. Thank you. I'll turn to my colleagues to report out on the meetings that they attended on behalf of the city. I'll turn to the vice mayor first.
Thank you. Two quick ones. Along with Councilmember Lorraine Scalotti, I met with Nancy Weyland, with the director of Marin Transit, or the general manager of Marin Transit. The council member and I are both on that board. We met to discuss the implications of the new building that Marin Transit is building on, is planning to build on Francisco Boulevard. We were pleased with the report that we received on their outreach efforts, particularly so their detailed findings and plans on training and entrepreneurial opportunities that they see in the community and that they can use the site to foster. And there also were options for disaster management with the site, in that it's a large bay that trucks and things could pull into, so they were very open to discussing possibilities of how that could be used in a disaster situation. The site also has not only diesel generators, but a big diesel fuel tank, so that would make it very well-suited for a disaster operation center of some type. And the general manager also pointed out to us that buses are used as sort of moving sites for when they're underway, the motors anyway, for people to charge their devices and to get in of the cold or of the heat. So, shelter options with the buses that are there, and I think there were 40 bays for buses, so there could be up to 40 buses on that site during a disaster. So, all in all, very productive meeting, I thought. Second item, building on the mayor's discussion of, one, our great dedication of staff and awesome things going on in San Rafael, last Saturday at Andy's was a concert by a band called Pride and Joy. Maybe you've heard of them? There were 1,000 people there. The place was, it was huge, and it was so great to see it on the site that 10 years ago was a parking lot. Absolutely fantastic, but then it got even more fantastic when Andy Basik, who is our 2018 Citizen of the Year, took the microphone. He thanked, the first person he thanked, city staff member Paul Jensen, now retired, who happened to be there. Very, very moving and wonderful, but then it got even more wonderful for the city, because the truck pulled up from Station 55, and everyone was like, oh, the fire department's here, let's go and have fun. As it turns out, it was there because one of the concertgoers required medical attention, but our current, our current Public Service Award winner, John Chung, for 2025, stepped up and began redirecting all of us enthusiastic people away from the ongoing site. So, all the city people coming together, making happen, it was, it was a great event. Very proud to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Sure, I'll just add on to that.
And it was so great to see it on the site that 10 years ago was a parking lot. Absolutely fantastic. But then it got even more fantastic when Andy Basic, who is our 2018 Citizen of the Year, took the microphone. He thanked, the first person he thanked, City Staff Member Paul Jensen, now retired, who happened to be there. Very, very moving and wonderful. But then it got even more wonderful for the city because the truck pulled up from Station 55. And, and everyone was like, oh, the fire department's here. Let's go and have fun. As it turns out, it was there because one of the concert goers required medical attention. But our current, our current Public Service Award winner, John Chung, for 2025, stepped up and began redirecting all of us enthusiastic people away from the ongoing site. So all the city people coming together, making happen. It was, it was a great event and very proud to be part of it. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Kurtz.
Sure. I'll just add on to that. At Andy's on October 12th, actually at 6:00 PM, the San Rafael Fire Foundation is going to be holding their event there.
And it's Andy's Market. You guys keep saying Andy's, but just for people that might not realize.
Yes, Andy's Market. That's true. Yes. Good point.
Yes.
All right. I attended the Marin Wildfire Prevention Authority Board Meeting, and this was the meeting where we did the handoff of the presidency. From me to Catherine Hillard from Southern Marin will be the president this year, and Barbara Kohler from Fairfax will be the vice president. So I wish them luck. Attended the State of Care Summit that was sponsored by Marin Center for Independent Living. There were about 100 caregivers there. Great event, lots of good conversation. Was able to do a welcome at the China Camp Heritage Day and attended the MCCMC Marin Council, Marin County Council of Mayors and Councilmembers Legislative Meeting. And right now we're down to the last two weeks of the current legislative session in California. So there's a lot of watching what bills are going to be going forward and get funded.
Thank you. Councilmember Ha.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. I have two items to report. The mayor and I attended the Finance Subcommittee Meeting on the topic of Park Impact Fee Program. We received a report that a study is being commissioned and, or actually received a report about the commissioned study and gave staff direction. If you want to see the details of it, I encourage you to watch it on YouTube when it releases. But I wanted to report a chance meeting that I had on Labor Day, which happened right over here in front of the library. I was out on a walk with my two very small children, eight-year-old and one-year-old, and there was water erupting from an irrigation valve vault. And called dispatch. And we went to the park and I bet my two children that it would be resolved by the time we got back. And my daughter, or my son, who's only one, understood what I was saying and said, he said, "On, it'll be on." I was like, wow, that's pretty clever. My daughter said, "It'll be in the middle of resolution when we get there." She won. Our very own Public Works responder was Omar Garcia, who was there with, with a wrench and he was closing it off. A pipe had broken. And all this is to say that there are untold stories of response that our staff do every day, including Labor Day, within 20 minutes of an incident. So while I'm calling out Omar this evening, I know that there are many untold stories that never get recognized, both by first responders but other staff. That's my report. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Yoren Scalati.
Yes, thank you, Mayor. I attended the Marin Latino Leaders Summer Community Mixer, and that was very well attended. It's always great to, to be in community. I also attended the Canal Promise Meeting that is led by Marin Promise. And we have leaders from the city, from the county, Canal Alliance and other important nonprofit organizations. So that's actually going really well focused on the Canal community. I also attended our very own Steve Mason's Retirement Party, and that was very well organized. And it was so nice to see, I mean, it's, it's, it's so well deserved and we are really going to miss him. It's been 16 years in Picoit, but he has so many years of experience. And I think there was so much representation from, I know leaders from Bocas del Canal, Omar Carrera, so many different organizations in addition to all the staff members from the city. So it was really great to celebrate him. So that was fun. And then I, on August 30th, I attended a Teletone in the Marin TV studios. And this was a fundraiser to benefit the victims from the fire. There was like amazing food from Bocas del Canal, where I'm doing that. And then there were performances, so that was really nice. And I just wanted to mention very quickly, see if I can, around the fire. It's amazing. Sorry, I've just got a little bit emotional. So I got, I got a call like at 6 o'clock and I got there. And it's, I'm so grateful because we hear all these things, but one thing is to hear about it and one thing is to be there. And it was just like this perfect dance where everybody was so efficient and at the same time so caring with the police agents came by lingual, talking to the victims. There was so much compassion. They, you know, like the both chiefs were there. I mean, everybody showed up, but it was so well organized. It was like seamless. And the fire was so tremendous, like really huge. And just seeing the neighbors, you know, come in with whatever was needed, you know, clothes, taking people to take a quick shower because they were in the mud, you know. And then being able to be at the Alborot Center and talking to some of the victims saying, sorry, I'm like, like, we, you know, we have nothing, but we have hope just because you all are here, you know? That was so impactful. And then, you know, hearing this senior person saying, you know, she's, I have to say, she's white. And basically she said, it was what the Malamint that actually saved me. They came to my apartment and they got me out of there, especially in these times where there is so much about immigration and discrimination. It's so powerful just to see how the entire community came together. So yeah, I think this is going to stay with me for a while. So I wanted to recognize in addition to everything that has been said, I mean, I have like deep gratitude and I'm just in awe just to see everybody, how they work together. But especially like Bocas del Canal, they were like three ladies that they were like the first ones to get there and immediately started taking, you know, names and phone numbers, supporting the community. And these are like leaders in the community. Bocas del Canal, they are part of Canal Alliance, but they are just leaders that they are coming out of the canal. And they are there every day, just really supporting. And this really showed how they were working with, with our police department, with, with fire and with everybody else, being able to, again, be there for the victims. So that was very moving. And Canal Alliance as well, you know, immediately they opened their building to use the bathrooms. And, and I'm just like, I think Golden Gate Transit was the one that sent the buses to take the victims to the Alborot Center. And getting to the Alborot Center within, I don't know, it was like one, two hours. I mean, time is a little bit funny how it went, but just getting there and everything was ready. Everything was ready and so many people stepping up. So anyway, I know everything has been said, but I just wanted to tell you my personal experience that I am, I always knew that our teams are incredible, but being able to be there in the middle and experience this is like, I guess, like goosebumps. So anyway, thank you. Huge gratitude. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember.
One more thing, I'm sorry. So, Nadia, I know this is long-term. I know that these families are going to be displaced. It's going to be really hard to find them homes. So I think being able to provide funding, donations is very important. And also if people have units, you know, ADUs or like rentals, not for like two weeks, but for like six months, for a year, I think is really going to be really important just to let the community know if they have those places available. It's, it would be amazing to get these victims into a stable housing, especially for, you know, the families. So anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you for that. I just have a quick report out. This is from the General Manager of SMART, the Sonoma Marin Area Rapid Transit. Fiscal year 25 ridership exceeded 1 million riders. So first time that milestone is 1,000, 1,123,686. You've got to count every single one. Both July and August had higher than average ridership versus 2024. July of 2025, 51% increase over the previous year. August, 35% increase. So folks are continuing to ride SMART. In addition, the pathway continues to be very popular, 39% raise since 2024 in comparison to 2024. So both the pathway and the train. And then finally, as I've mentioned here before, SMART Connect is the little, literally connector that takes you from the SMART station to the Larkspur ferry and that now runs seven days a week. So of course the ridership numbers on that are going up. So glad to report that SMART continues to go in the right direction. So wanted to share that. So thank you as always to the council and to the city manager for your reports and sharing out with the community, all the work that goes on between the meetings on the dais. Before we go to the consent agenda, I will open the public comment. And if you have anything you'd like to comment on the city manager or council member reports, now would be your opportunity. Okay, not seen anyone. I will close the public comment and go to the consent agenda. Items for A to 4E, are there any items that the council member would like to hold? Okay, not seen any. I will open up the public comment on the consent agenda. If anyone would like to comment on these items. And you're invited, but not required to say your name and what part of San Rafael you're from.
Happy to give both.
Okay.
My name is Sue Burrell and I live in Girlstall Park. And I'm here to speak on behalf of San Rafael Heritage. And just a brief comment, it just sounds like it doesn't need it because it's on the consent calendar, but San Rafael Heritage applauds the City of San Rafael and Marin History Museum on the Boyd Gate House Use Agreement on tonight's consent calendar. The agreement will increase cultural offerings and assure greater awareness of our city and county's rich history. It supports downtown San Rafael's emergence as a cultural hub of Marin County. Our organization, San Rafael Heritage, stands ready to support the city and Marin History Museum in this endeavor in any way that would be useful. The only question that came up for us on our board about the agreement is whether it's clear enough that the city will remain responsible for maintaining the building itself. But most of us are of the view that in delineating the day-to-day custodial duties for Marin History Museum, the city is assuming that it will continue as the, is the entity responsible for the, the building itself. So perhaps that's something you would want to clarify. Thank you for your consideration.
Thank you. Any additional public comment?
Good evening. My name is Lou and I'm here tonight to speak out about the 516 Canal Fire on August 21st. And y'all may remember Pam Scoggan. She's a advocate for mental health. She spoke here, she spoke at the county. My concerns are, did the landlord have an emergency evacuation plan that was listed with the fire department because she was mentally disabled and physically disabled? She was trapped in her apartment. The, the stairway was completely burned away. And there was a neighbor that pulled a ladder from his house to rescue people. Then the fire department came. And if the fire department knew that she was still upstairs, would they have been able to save her life? And I'm concerned that there needs to be some kind of preventive because this can happen to somebody else. There's a lot of disabled seniors in the area. Tracy, who lived on the second floor, jumped and was found in the canal. She unfortunately died as well. But could they have been saved if there was some kind of evacuation plan that the landlord had registered with the city or the fire department? But I want to commend the San Rafael Police and the fire department and everyone that was involved because it was horrifying to see it on YouTube. She was my best friend. She's going to be honored on 9/11 at 12 to 12 o'clock at the Enterprise Resource Center in the canal. And Nami will be there and also the downtown, town, street teams. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to comment on the consent agenda? Okay, if not, I'll bring it back to the council for approval. And I know there were questions that were raised about the White House and if staff could follow up offline with the heritage group. That would be great to answer those questions. I would entertain a motion on these items.
I'll make a motion to approve the consent calendar.
Thank you. Is there a second? Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yoren Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries 5-0. We have two special presentations, as the city manager had alluded to earlier, and we'll take them one at a time. The first one is a presentation proclamation recognition of Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, and the next one is recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month. I will read the proclamation. We do have folks to speak to them. Before we do that, we actually take public comment prior to the presentation. So if you'd like to comment on either of these items, now is your opportunity. Okay, we'll bring it back to the dais and there will be more to be said. I will start with the Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. The proclamation is quite long and I'll just be clear that I shortened it a little bit because I really want to hear from the experts, but I did think it's important that folks know the, the city takes it seriously. So we have a proclamation. So City of San Rafael Proclamation and Recognition of Suicide Prevention Awareness Month, September 2025. It's recognized as a time when mental health professionals, prevention organizations, survivors, allies and communities unite to change the narrative about suicide in our community by promoting hope, fostering open dialogue, de-stigmatizing mental health issues and celebrating the possibility of recovery. And whereas suicide is a major public health concern that can affect anyone, regardless of age, race, gender, sexual orientation, economic status or background. And whereas in Marin County, 65 friends, neighbors and family members died by suicide between 2020 and 2025, with an additional 794 self-harm injuries requiring visits to the ER during 2020 and 2023, underscoring the ongoing need for local prevention and support efforts. And whereas Marin County's September campaign, quote, "Ask, Listen, Connect," unquote, provides the language and tools for everyone to take critical steps to save lives and build a more understanding, connected and safe community. And whereas the City of San Rafael recognizes that suicide prevention requires collective action through education, early intervention, access to care and building supported, supportive and connected communities, and reminds all residents and community members that the National Alliance on Mental Illness and the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline, where you dial 988, works to help individuals in crisis and provide resources for loved ones who want to support individuals. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and the city council of the City of San Rafael hereby proclaim the month of September 2025 as Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. And I will invite Kara Connors and Mario Castillo to come up and speak. And Kara, I've gotten to know over the last couple of years through the Gun Safety Collaborative, and I have learned so much from you. So thank you for being here to represent the county Marin. And Mario is here with Buckaloo Programs. Welcome.
Thank you very much, City Council, for having us here today and for reviewing the proclamation, which is very comprehensive. I come here with Mario to acknowledge Suicide Prevention Awareness Month. It's hard to imagine that it wasn't until 17 years ago that Suicide Prevention Awareness Month was first acknowledged in our country. About seven years ago, a group of parents who lost their children by suicide came to Marin County to talk a little bit about what that loss, how that loss has impacted them and through persistent advocacy, pressed for a strategic plan. Five years ago, that strategic plan was passed by our county. And along with that came the launch of the Suicide Prevention Collaborative in Marin County. It's pretty remarkable that our county has been able to invest those types of resources to launch a collaborative to address the prevention, intervention and postvention services that are required to tackle a really complex health issue that is often preventable. You mentioned Mayor Kate. Our campaign for the month is Ask, Listen and Connect. When we treat suicide as a health issue, we know what our next moves are, and that is to ask, then to listen, and then to connect a person to resources. In honor of the last five years of our work as a collaborative, we are going to be acknowledging our work, our collective work together on September 10th at Homeward Bound with some light bites at 6:00 PM, light bites, some art, collaboration in honoring of those who we have lost by suicide. So I hope people can join us. I have a flyer out on the, in the lobby area. This work does not get done alone. Each one of us play a really, really important role. And one of our partners is here today, Mario Castillo, who is a member of our Men and Boys Action Team, but is also a suicide prevention trainer in our county. So thank you, Mario, for joining us today.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council Members, thank you for having me.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council members, thank you for having me. My name is Mario Castillo Guido, and I work for Buckaloo Mental Health Programs as the coordinator for Suicide Prevention Education and Outreach. In my role, I connect our community with the tools, knowledge, and resources they need to talk about mental health, recognize the warning signs of suicide, and know how to respond. I bring my passion for community engagement, my experience as a peer educator, and my dedication to breaking stigma, especially in the Latino community and other underserved groups where mental health conversation can be difficult. At Buckaloo Mental Health Programs, we offer a range of suicide prevention services, including presentations for schools, workplace, and community support groups, counseling, trainings, and outreach to promote the 988 Suicide and Crisis Lifeline. Our mission is to make sure everyone knows that help is just a phone call or text away 24 hours, seven days a week. The most important message I can share is this: Suicide can be prevented, and each of us has a role to play. It starts with noticing when someone's mood, behavior, or situation changes. It means asking directly if they are thinking about suicide, listening without judgment, and connecting them to professional help. If you or someone you know is struggling, call or text 988, or use the online chat at 988lifeline.org. You don't have to be a professional to save a life, you just have to be willing to care, listen, and act. Together, by reaching out, checking in, and sharing resources, we can create a community where no one feels alone in their darkest moment. And just to add to that, Buckaloo is the local organization that oversees one of the 11 call centers in California. Thank you for having us, very much appreciated.
Thank you both. And after we do the next presentation, we'll do a little photo moment, okay? So if you can sit tight. The next presentation is of proclamation recognition of Hispanic Heritage Month, and I'm glad that Cecilia Zamora is here with the Hispanic Heritage Council after. Wait, hold on, let me read it. Hold on, give me a second. Or you can stand there, let me read the proclamation. Whereby, let me see, Hispanic Heritage Month, whereas the City of San Rafael proudly celebrates the vibrant contributions to diverse cultures and rich histories of Hispanic and Latino individuals, families, and communities across the United States, whose ancestral roots trace to Mexico, Puerto Rico, Cuba, the Dominican Republic, Central America, South America, Spain, Africa, and the Caribbean. And whereas in 2025, the national theme for Hispanic Heritage Month, Todo somos uno, we are all, we are one, underscores unity, shared identity, and collective strength of Hispanic and Latino communities while recognizing their intersectional identities, histories, and aspirations. And whereas in San Rafael, over 30% of the city's population identifies as Hispanic, Latino, and/or Indigenous, and the city honors the many cultural, economic, and civic contributions of this community, and the dedicated work of community partners, including Canal Alliance, the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of Marin, the Latino Council, Vozista Canal, the Multicultural Center Marin, and the many individuals within our own city workforce, and of all the contributions from Hispanic and Latino residents, citizens, and communities to the economic, cultural, social, and historic fabric of our city. And whereas Hispanic Heritage Month is a meaningful opportunity to celebrate cultural pride, reflect on generations of perseverance and achievement, and commit to equity, inclusion, and the uplift of all voices in our shared community. Therefore, be it resolved that the mayor and city council of the City of San Rafael proclaim September 15 through October 15 as Hispanic Heritage Month. And as Cecilia was coming up, I was thinking about the incredible murals that we have on the Owl Borough Center that really capture everything that we just talked, everything that I just read. Welcome, Cecilia.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you, City Council. I wanted to say, first of all, appreciate that you are taking the time to recognize National Hispanic Heritage Month because we actually recognize it all over the country, and it's so important that we do it here in San Rafael. I wanted to take a moment just to say, I had not prepared this, but thank you, Micah, for sharing your personal experience with that canal fire because it really sends that message that San Rafael is a special place and that we come together when we need to, particularly in these times when things are so crazy and disproportional. I wanted to first make sure I introduce myself to the audience who's not here. I'm Cecilia Zamora, President of the Hispanic Chamber of Commerce of Marin and Executive Director of the Latino Council. As many of you know, my offices were located in San Rafael for many years until COVID, and I served on the San Rafael Vision 2040 work that went into the city's general plan. Both of my organizations have been operating in Marin County for more than several decades, and I've seen the positive changes in our community. The organizations mentioned in the resolution have also grown and shaped San Rafael's canal neighborhood and surrounding Latino neighborhoods, important work that was started many years ago when I was with the United Way of the Bay Area, a long time ago. As an update, I wanted to share a couple of things that we're doing. The Latino Council is currently working with the Marin County Coalition to End Human Trafficking. I co-chair this with the District Attorney Lori Fergoli, and San Rafael Police Department is very present in the steering committee of that work. We are excited to be working on a video for Spanish-speaking parents. You'll be surprised to learn that one does not exist in the North Bay, and we will share it widely when it's produced in early 2026, so we're excited about that project. The Hispanic Chamber of Commerce also has some wonderful things going on. We're hosting Landfill Harmonic, a phenomenal youth orchestra from Paraguay. They use instruments fashioned from the recycled materials of their local landfill, and you might know that they were here last year. Patty Garberino of Marin Sanitary Services is their special heart person, and so she brings them out here. We're doing this in partnership with the Marin Sanitary Services and E3, and it will be held at the Marin Shakespeare Theater on the evening of September 25th. So I'll make sure that Lindsay has the information to send to you because we'd love to see you there. Also, to highlight Marin Shakespeare Theater, because Leslie Clear and I have been trying to figure out ways to make sure people know that her theater is really happening too. I want to acknowledge the San Rafael City Clerk Lindsay Lara for her assistance with our Dominican University student projects on increasing diversity on boards and commissions. Thank you, Lindsay. And I wanted to let you know that this year's project will be focusing on recruitment and public awareness of the importance of boards and commissions, so we couldn't do it without Lindsay's incredible help. Thank you to the City of San Rafael for your proactive role in creating strong multicultural community, in support of the canal neighborhood, and for its vision to support a strong and growing Latino business sector throughout the city, and for this National Hispanic Heritage Month resolution. I also wanted to say, I love Steve Mason, and I'm sorry to see that he's retiring, but he's been such a wonderful steward of what we all still call pickleweed. So thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Cecilia. So as promised, I'm going to invite the council to come down and get some quick pics.
I would go over towards the dais if you can, and I'll come this way.
Yes.
Right over here.
Okay. Thank you.
Yeah, you go first. Excellent. Okay, over the right. Sorry, shifting perspective. Perfect, thank you.
Thank you.
Right in the middle.
Yeah.
Okay. Two phones.
Okay.
Here, three.
I really did.
And I'm talking to you.
We'll move to the public hearings. The first one, 6A, has been removed from the agenda. It is a park impact fee and park dedication and in lieu fee program, so that will not be heard this evening. So the first item we'll hear as a public hearing is the triennial building code ordinance amendments. I love that, triennial. You'll have to speak to that, okay? And I see that Cory Bedoff is here to walk us through it.
Hello, Mayor and Council, nice to see you. I'm back for the first reading again of the triennial building code amendments, and I wish I could say it was because Mayor Kate missed it, and I'm just repeating it for her benefit, but unfortunately, that's not the case. We're back in front of you because we got word from the California Energy Commission that, as written, it wasn't going to be approved by them. So we're back with the first reading with some minor adjustments. They weren't quite as enthralled by our innovative approach. Anyway, for the sake of the public hearing, even though we did this last time, I'm going to go through the whole thing for the sake of the public, but it'll be quick. So every three years, the state adopts building codes, they have some intervening codes with some minor tweaks in between. We adopted it in the last three-year cycle as well in 2022, and then last year in 2024, we adopted one of our REACH codes. We typically include REACH codes as part of our Climate Change Action Plan, efforts to reduce emissions. The largest source of emissions is transportation, and the second-largest source is from our buildings. And then the new codes are 2025 codes that will be in effect January 1st, 2026, if we do nothing. However, we always have some local amendments, and in order to do that, we adopt them proactively with these amendments. The majority of the reason that we do these amendments is to incorporate them into our city code titles and numbers so that it's easy for applicants, property owners, and our code-inspiring building inspectors to be able to find them, locate them, and make sure that they're more seamless in our codes. There are some new definitions in there for kitchen and major remodels. We have some additional fire and pool safety regulations, and then we have this update to our FlexPath model REACH code, which is for a single-family residential, and that's what we adopted last year. So just as a reminder, how the FlexPath works is for, again, single-family, major remodels, 500 square feet or more. It's focusing on energy efficiency. There's some electrification measures in there people can choose as well. It's a menu of options, so you can match the options that are in there to your project, to your budget, to your inclinations, and we make it easy for people to comply. It's tied to building vintages, so older vintages typically have a lot more you can do for energy efficiency than newer vintages. And it's all supported by state cost-effectiveness studies, and we developed the first round of target scores in conversation with local builders and planning commissioners. So this is the typical score sheet, this is the one that we have in place right now. So you locate your building vintage along the top, you're earlier in there, 1978, 1978 to 92, and 92 and above. You look at your target score, and then you pick from all those measures, and you can see there's a lot of measures in there to choose from. So our proposal is to amend the FlexPath target scores so that effective January 1st, 2027, the scores will bump up. And we're doing it right now as one of the proactive ways to meet the requirements of AB 130, which was the trailer bill to the budget this year in July, which is really a pro-housing bill trying to limit all the things that might get in the way of building new housing. One of the unintended consequences is that all existing building REACH codes were wrapped up in that as well, and so it's putting a moratorium on that till 2031. So if we have them in there now, this allows for enforcement in the future, it also allows us to gather data, and it allows for non-enforcement. If for some reason we found that the target scores are too challenging, especially in terms of the budget, or people's pocket butts, or infeasible, then we wouldn't have to enforce them. But if we don't have them in now, we may not have that opportunity. I will say that the findings in the ordinance, all this is the same as last time, is we do mention two things that could be exceptions. All that's to be worked out over time. Both the Building Standards Commission and the California Energy Commission, neither one have been able to issue rulings on how those exceptions might be applied. So we're putting them in now to make sure that we get in under the September 30th deadline. And one of the updates the California Energy Commission emailed the day after we adopted this last time was that they wanted to have a very specific cost-effectiveness memo for the jurisdiction. Everything was by climate zone in the past and was justifiable, and so the state codes team jumped on it and got us one the very next day. And so here is the chart that I showed last time, and the top is the target score of the current FlexPath. The target score proposed for January 1, 2027 is in the next row, and you see it goes up to 16.9, and the zero is interesting and meaningful because the updated cost effectiveness basically showed that the newer vintages, that the cost effectiveness is no longer there for the items in the chart. And the one that struck through is the one that we had put in where we said, why don't we, in this time period, go ahead and put in a 2029 target score increases while proactively? And again, if it's in there and we decide we can't enforce it or shouldn't enforce it, we could always not do that, but we could get it in now. And this is where the California Energy Commission said, hmm, not so fast. In 2028, there will be a new building code. Even if AB 130 restricts and restricts energy and efficiency requirements, there still will be a new building code, and they could not approve an amendment to that that typically would have to amend that code. Our outside legal counsel and the state codes team didn't think that that was necessary, but nevertheless, the folks that are approving it said that, so that's what we're doing. So that's your presentation, and I can open it up for comments and public hearing. Thank you.
Thank you. I'll turn to the council member for additional questions. I know you've discussed this, but with the update, do you have any other additional questions? Councilmember Hill.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you, Cory, for the presentation again. We did get a letter from Sustainable San Rafael asking for a more aggressive number, basically the 2029 proposed number, back to 2027. Can you share why we wouldn't go to something more extreme sooner?
Sure. I would just say that part of the long process, councilmembers Bushy and Yorenz Glati won our subcommittee when we developed all this, was the idea that we really wanted to base it in data and real, on-the-ground implementation and see how things were going before we started to bump up the scores. So we weren't actually going to come with score increases until next year. AB 130 put us in a position where we may not have ever been able to increase the target scores, at least not for the next six years, and so that's why we brought it forward now, but we still projected it into the future to January 1, 2027, to give us time to get that data. So just that intention of it being data-based and based in real-life implementation was an important factor, and either the council members can speak to this if they'd like as well. That said, the target scores that we were projecting for 2029 are supported by the cost-effectiveness study.
Thank you.
Thank you. Additional questions? Okay. No additional.
I have the same question.
Okay, okay. I'm not seeing any current, any additional questions. I'll open up the public comment on this item. If you'd like to speak to it, now is your opportunity. And as always, you're welcome but not required to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in.
Good evening, Council. I'm Bill Carney with Sustainable San Rafael. Good summary, thank you, of our request. Basically, we're recommending, in light of this sudden feedback from the state, that the targets that we are allowed to set for 2027 be upped by three points, basically, in both categories. Not a huge increase. As Cory mentioned, they were pretty fully vetted previously and shown to be cost-effective for the full, so we would get the benefit of the more aggressive targets that had been applied, we would get that benefit applied to the whole six years, or for whatever the math is, that portioned that after 2027. So that's what we're proposing. And we believe it is in conformance with what we've seen of what the state is requiring. Also, in compliance with the state's requirements, this change is aligned with the city's general plan, which states that electrification in particular of building systems and appliances in both new buildings and those currently using natural gas, that these be increased and move towards full electrification. So that's a- So that's a paraphrase of what is in the, in the general plan material that you were provided. So thank you for considering this. We feel it's a reasonable way forward at this point, given this sudden information from the state. Thanks.
Thank you. Any additional public comment? Okay, I'm going to close the public comment and bring it back to the guys for additional comments. Vice Mayor, do you have any comments, being that you proceeded over the, this item?
I do, we continue to support the matter and continue to support the flex path approach and agree with the modifications that staff has recommended brought forward.
Okay, any additional comments? Okay, not seen. Oh, yeah, go ahead. Make comment.
Yeah, thank you. I think having heard Corey and also hearing Bill Carney from Sustainable San Rafael, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be supporting it as written by staff. I did take in what you were saying, Corey, about that we will have another opportunity to, to increase in the future. And so I would, I would lean toward that direction that we're more data driven.
Yeah, I, I really don't know if we will. There are two exceptions to AB 130 that are under consideration. All of this has been such a fast moving change and we've been waiting for good guidance from, again, the C E C and the California Energy Commission and the Building Standards Commission. And we have not gotten that. And so it's unknown as to whether we'll be able to update again between now and 2031. Yeah, it's unknown.
I see. So we would not be able, we, we don't know if we would be able to, so.
We don't know if we'd be.
So whatever level we're at right now for 2027, we'd have to hold that firm until 31.
We.
Well, we don't know.
We don't know. Yeah, it's possible that one of these exceptions will work in our favor. And there's certainly a lot of folks that are positing that that would be the case. But it's, that's why we, we moved to have this done now, to preserve the opportunity to do it just in case.
Got you. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Unless there are any other comments, I'd entertain a motion on this item.
I'll make a motion to introduce the ordinance way far the reading, refer to it by title only, and set a public hearing for Tuesday, September 15th, 2025.
If I may correct that to Monday, September 15th.
Oh.
That was a typo carryover.
Okay, to Monday. Thank you.
Second?
Moved in seconded, roll call please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedans Galati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero and I request that the city clerk read the title of the ordinance.
An ordinance of the Centerfall City Council amending Title 12 Building Regulations of the Municipal Code of the City of Centerfall by repealing Title 12 and amending Title 12 thereof, adopting the 2025 edition of the California Building Code, the California Residential Code, the California Mechanical Code, the California Plumbing Code, the California Electrical Code, the California Existing Building Code, the California Green Building Standards Code, the California Energy Code and the California Reference Standards Code with the appendices and amendments herein, adopting the 2024 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code and the International Pool and Spa Code with amendments, amend Chapter 12.360 Single Family Model Reach Code Flex Path herein and adopting findings of fact supporting the amendments to the codes.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Good that you did that and not one of us up here, so thank you. Next agenda item has been removed. This is item seven A. It was affordable housing requirements for residential development projects. That has been removed. So we'll be going towards to the next item, which is response to the grand jury report. We have two responses that we're reviewing this evening. The first one is first responders and I see Chief Spiller has joined us. Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor Kate. Good evening, once again, members of the city council, Dave Spiller, Police Chief. As the mayor has mentioned, this is the first of two responses to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury. The grand jury report dated June 17th of 2025 is entitled Marin County First Responders Supporting Those Who Support Us. This grand jury report was distributed to countywide, across the county Marin, to all cities and towns within the county. The city is required to respond to the grand jury report pursuant to the penal code as enumerated in the statute. No later than 90 days after the grand jury submits a final report, the governing body, in this case, the city council of the public agency shall, shall comment to the presiding judge of the Superior Court on the findings and recommendations pertaining to the matters within, within the control of the governing body. So to comply with the statute, the city's response to this grand jury report must be approved by resolution of the council and submitted to the presiding judge of Marin County Superior Court on or before September 17th. So as I mentioned in June of this year, the 2024-25 Marin County Civil Grand Jury released a grand jury report entitled Marin County First Responders Supporting Those Who Support Us. The grand jury report addresses the work of Marin County First Responders, including law enforcement, fire services, paramedics and emergency room personnel. The report underscores how many within the first responder community routinely confront continually changing societal challenges, including substance abuse, mental health crisis, violence, as well as homelessness. All of these challenges often strain public services. The full grand jury report, of course, is part of your packet. So the grand jury report includes 10 specific findings centered on specialized assistance for everyone. You all recall our, our safe team as an alternative response to police and fire services. That includes findings on the use of the Helen Vine Recovery Center or the sobering facility, as well as specific items surrounding emergency communications. The grand jury report also presents eight specific recommendations as it relates to this report from the Marin County Civil Grand Jury. The grand jury has directed the city of San Rafael to respond to findings F1 and F2, as well as F5 and F6. The Marin County Civil Grand Jury has also directed the city of San Rafael to respond to recommendation number two, excuse me, recommendation number two, R2. City staff is recommending that the city's response to this report include any actions taken by the city, the police department on the development of a public safety alternative response program, specifically as it relates to the recommendations and findings in the report. As we are required to respond to applicable findings, F1, I will underscore, because the specialized assistance for everyone, the safe team in San Rafael has proven to be an effective alternative response for 911 calls, related mental health crises, substance abuse and homelessness. Some police and fire resources have been freed to respond to other critical calls for service. The city agrees with this finding. Finding number two, because San Rafael specialized assistance for everyone, team hours are limited. Some 911 calls related to those very same calls, mental health crises, substance abuse and homelessness, must be otherwise handled by police officers. The city agrees with this finding as well. Moving on to finding five and six, because no specialized assistance for everyone teams operate in Southern Marin, West Marin, or unincorporated areas of Marin County, police and fire services continue to respond to 911 calls relating to these types of calls for service that would be better served by a different kind of response team, such as SAFE. Lastly, finding six, because there are no permanent dedicated funding sources for SAFE teams throughout Marin County, these programs face insecure futures, no matter how successful they are. The city also agrees with this finding. As it relates to recommendations, the grand jury has asked the city to respond to recommendation two. This recommendation specifically cites that by March 1st of 2026, the city council of San Rafael should fund additional specialized assistance for everyone team resources when requested by the San Rafael Police Department, following its evaluation of the current program. As you recall, we are in a three year pilot of our SAFE team that actually expires in March of 2026. So with that said, staff recognizes city council support for the police department's alternative response pilot program known as SAFE. In its regular scheduled meeting back in January of 2023, this body, the city council, took action to fund the SAFE team for this three year pilot. That funding, that decision that the city council made, created the opportunity for success with this alternative response strategy. Since the approval of the funding for the pilot deployment of the SAFE team, the police department have continued to provide updates to city council and the community, which include operational information and statistics on the team's activity. The San Rafael SAFE team deployment continues to be successful, supporting vulnerable members of our community by providing this public safety alternative response and assigning law enforcement and medical calls to the SAFE team as a way more extremely beneficial and valuable resource, particularly in cases of mental health, chemical dependency and support to the unhoused individuals in our community. Police department staff continue to pursue grant funding and alternative funding sources or strategies. At the same time, the city manager's office, finance department and the police department continue to monitor all of our SAFE team expenditures to maximize the duration of this program's pilot. In summary, you know, the SAFE team pilot will, the overview of the pilot will be presented to city council in early 2026. So that's our plan. You'll get an update, including an overview of all the activity and statistics. But at this time, there is no long term funding strategy for the SAFE team resource. Should be noted that the grand jury report, recommendation number one, is not a requirement in terms of our response, but I want to share. Recommendation number one says by March 1st of 2026, the Marin County Board of Supervisors should find a long term funding source to fund SAFE for teams throughout the county. The city of San Rafael, particularly police administration, believes that this recommendation should be more broad, including, to include the city of San Rafael. The city recommends a larger countywide effort toward a long term funding source to support the specialized assistance for everyone resource, including the city of San Rafael, similar to the recommendation for the rest of the county. Calls for service, emergency room diversions, ambulance diversions and other criminal justice diversions have proven the need for such a program in San Rafael. And the inclusion of our organization is imperative for a countywide funding strategy. While the options listed in your staff report include various different options, staff recommends that the city council adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the city of San Rafael's response to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury report. And with that, I will turn it back to the council.
Thank you, Chief, for that excellent response to the grand jury's report and recommendations. Any questions? Yeah, Councilmember Kurtz, go ahead.
Do you happen to know at this point, I know the, the agencies that were identified on the grand jury report did not include the other jurisdictions necessarily? And if, if the other jurisdictions are actually had an opportunity to, to look at this?
Yeah, all of the jurisdictions are in receipt of the report. There are required responses and there are invited responses. For example, the Marin County Police Chiefs Association was an invited response and we provided a, our, the president of our association responded to the grand jury. The Board of Supervisors, I do not know. The Nevada Fire Protection District, you know, those are, as well as the Marin Healthcare District, those are all organizations that are required to provide a response. I'm, I'm not sure at this point what their, what the content of their response will be.
Right, and but the other jurisdictions in, like, there was a reference to Southern Marin. There was a, you know, reference to other areas within Marin County, but they weren't identified as, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you. Any additional questions? Councilmember Hill.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you, Chief Spiller, for being here and for providing us this report. On finding one, I found that the way that it was phrased, that, that some police and fire resources have been freed. Can you add more color to what some means for us? I know that we've received reports statistically in the past of what diversion has meant for police and fire, but maybe you can help us understand how much of an impact has it made on, on our community for calls for service?
Yeah, so our SAFE team, I would call it notable success. Our SAFE team takes in excess of 3,000 calls for service in any given year. Diversions, you can't hold me to the number, but I think hospital diversions are in excess of 80, nearly 100 hospital diversions, criminal justice diversions, by just, you know, avoiding having to take somebody to jail as, you know, with other alternatives in mind. When I look at the word some, the SAFE team's very busy. They take as many calls as they can. Sometimes the SAFE team is involved in a call for service and another call will come out. Police officer may have to respond to that, similar to a fire call for service. After hours, you know, we run a 12 hour program and then there are calls for service after hours that require law enforcement or fire first responders to, to take those calls. So it doesn't cover everything, but having those peak hours from 8:00 a.m. to 8:00 p.m. covered by the SAFE team really makes a notable difference in terms of police officers being, police officers and fire apparatus being available for those emergency calls and probably a more appropriate resource to, to take those calls.
Great, thank you. I know it's, it's outside of the, what's being requested, but it's helpful to understand that it's more than just some. Some is a very, has a connotation of just a little and it seems like it is notable.
Yes, I would agree.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Not seen any further questions. I'll open up the public comment on this item. If you'd like to make some remarks, you're invited, but not required to say your name, what part of San Rafael you're from. Oh, yeah, pull that down. There you go.
Crunch. Hi, Salama. Chief, forgive me, I did not read the report, but I have a question as a supporter of the SAFE team. Are any other cities or areas throughout our county having any kind of a SAFE program?
So go ahead and make your comments and then we'll close the public comment. No, that's okay. And then he'll, and then the chief and city staff will respond. Thank you, Salama. Any other public comment on this item? Okay, not seen any, I'll close it. And now I will direct it to the chief to answer if there are any other cities, although I know the answer to that myself, Nevada, right?
Yeah, so Nevada has also contracted with Petaluma People's Services and run a very similar program. Similar in terms of deployment, I think, I don't think they run a seven day week, but similar in terms of a partial day or half of the day. Marin City actually has a separate nonprofit, not Petaluma People's Services, very similar model. I think it's grant funded. I can't speak to the specifics because I'm not aware of it, but I am aware of the resources that exists in Marin City specifically and in, not exactly the same thing, but the Ritter Center has a mobile unit that's available for similar, similar service calls. So there are, you know, the, this type of resource, alternative responders out there in the field is becoming more commonplace.
Thank you. I wanted to, and I'll open up to the council and my comments, but I just wanted to say thank you for that excellent report. And I really want to note that San Rafael was pragmatic and we made a big decision when we had the American Rescue Plan dollars. So I just want to remind the community, we were able to do this because we had dollars because of the pandemic. And this council reflected the values of our community of helping folks that were unhoused and have in mental health crisis. And by the way, it's not just unhoused individuals, it's housed individuals using it. And we did that because the current resources that were offered by the county were not serving our community. So I'm really proud of our community and the city that we made that decision. And just so thankful to the police because if it wasn't for SRPD, we could make all the decisions we want, but you all are the ones that have made it happen and made it so seamless. You and your team have figured out how to have it coordinate with county resources as well as with your own patrols. So it's really thanks to you all that it has been so successful. And I look forward to that report in January or whenever we have it of all the diversion numbers. We have had that report, I think, last year and it was very, very impressive. So I did want to jump out. Maybe I summarized enough comments for everybody else, but if anyone else wants to say something. Councilmember Kurtz is dying to say something. Okay.
No, I just want to thank you. I mean, rarely do I read a grand jury report and like, oh, yes, I agree. Yes, you're right. So it was really great and I think that, I hope you've shared it with the SAFE team as well. Because I think they are on the ground all the time and it has made a huge difference. So I agree with a lot of the fine. So I agree with a lot of the findings. I don't necessarily agree with the recommendations always, and and that's okay. I'll be interested to hear the responses from the county and, you know, Nevada's response as well. The biggest sign of of a compliment is the copying, and it's nice to see that others have done that.
Absolutely.
Well said. Any other comments? Okay, Councilmember Hill, go ahead.
Yes, thank you, Mayor Kate. Thank you again, Chief Spiller, for presenting this evening. And I appreciated staff's response to recommendation one, even though it was not requested. I do think that that all of Marin County could benefit. And building on Mayor Kate's comments, that the city of San Rafael, I think, did take appropriate initiative to meet the moment. That even though we've found a way to allocate dollars to it, it would be really, I think, an appropriate outcome that the county can provide consistent budgeting for this for all of all of Marin, including the city of San Rafael, Nevada, and all jurisdictions that that could require this kind of support. So thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Micah?
Yes, thank you. Thank you so much for the response. And definitely something that, a service that, in my opinion, is working extremely well. And I just wanted to mention, when we had the fire at Canal Lion, I'm sorry, in the canal, the SAFE team was actually at the shelter, helping the victims. So it's it's not just for people there in the house, but really to support our community. So thank you.
Thank you so much. I request a motion on this item, please.
I'll make a motion.
Is there a second?
A second.
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Sorry. Do you want me to read?
Oh, yes, you read the motion. Sorry, make the motion. Yes, go ahead.
Jumped right ahead.
Yeah.
Adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the response to the Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report entitled, "Marin County First Responders Supporting Those Who Support Us."
Thank you. Now we'll have the roll call.
And can you tell me who the second was again?
Uh, Mayor Micah.
Thank you. Perfect. All right. Vice Mayor Bushy. Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarandzgladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. We have an additional grand jury report to respond to, and that is one on housing. Welcome. Community development.
Good evening, Mayor, Councilmembers. Micah Hinkle, Community and Economic Development Director. With me tonight is Greg Meiner, Assistant Director. And with that, I'm going to turn over to Greg, because he spent a lot of time and effort with our housing manager to prepare this grand jury response for your review.
Success. All right, there we go. Good evening, Greg Meiner. Again, with Community Economic Development Department. As was referenced earlier, there was a second civil grand jury report for the city to respond to, this one on housing, specifically the status of housing development in Marin County with respect to the city of San Rafael and all other cities and towns in the county of Marin as well. The grand jury was surprised to repeatedly consistently hear from local planning directors, developers, and other housing experts that community opposition is not currently the most significant impediment to the development or construction of housing. But rather, the grand jury found that significant cost challenges make building housing financially unattractive. And those include high interest rates, construction and labor costs, as well as compliance with state and local building codes. Hence, the subtitle of this report, "NIMBY Resistance Takes a Backseat to Economic Reality." As Chief Spiller mentioned in in his report, the penal code prescribes the process for which the city responds to a grand jury report, namely, for all of the findings, the city needs to identify whether they agree or disagree in whole or in part. And then for the recommendations, the city needs to identify whether the recommendation has been implemented, has not yet been implemented, requires further analysis, or will not be implemented because it is not warranted or reasonable. For this report, the city of San Rafael, along with all 11 other cities and towns in the county of Marin, were required to respond to all nine findings and all six recommendations. In the proposed response that staff drafted, we agreed with finding number four, in that the high cost of housing reduced the ability of public sector employers to attract and retain employees. But with respect to the other findings, the draft response disagrees either in part or in full, largely because of two reasons. One is that the findings confused compliance with state housing requirements with actual construction, as opposed to supporting the development of 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 construction. Or the finding required the city of San Rafael to make a conclusion about the compliance or status of all 11 Marin cities and towns. With respect to the recommendations, the draft response recommends not implementing recommendations one and two because they're not warranted or reasonable. Namely, they don't advance any housing goals by just simply requiring staff to report more frequently about what is is not happening, or to require staff to report quarterly in lieu of providing information that's already available on the city's website or as part of the annual progress report. With respect to recommendations three through six, the city has already implemented those. So that is, that is the report for this evening. The recommendation is for the city council to adopt the resolution authorizing the mayor to execute the city of San Rafael's response to the grand jury report, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you for that report. Any questions? Not seen any questions from the dais. I'll see if there's any public comment on this item. If you'd like to comment, now is your opportunity. Okay, I'm going to close the public comment. You just wrapped that all up really tightly, I guess. So thank you. Any additional comments before we have a motion?
Just to acknowledge, I think, this outcome, that even in the grand jury's misnaming of what what might be technically the issue, I think, we might all agree, or at least folks who are invested in the matter, is that this is a very complex issue. That it's too simple just to say, well, not in my backyard folks were able to stop development in the past. There are many forces at play here. So all this is to say that I am proud of what the city of San Rafael has done to encourage housing outcomes as expressed in our housing element. And I appreciate that staff responded, that we will continue to move forward with what we've said we were going to do. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember Hill. Excellent comments. Would you like to make a motion on this item?
Sure thing. I move that we adopt a resolution approving and authorizing the mayor to execute the response, the Marin County Civil Grand Jury Report entitled, "The Worrisome Future of Marin Housing: NIMBY Resistance Takes a Backseat to Economic Reality."
Second?
Moved and seconded. Roll call, please.
Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yarandzgladi.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye, that motion carries five zero. Thank you, Greg. Thank you, Director Hinkle. The last item on the agenda this evening is fiscal year 2024-25 unaudited results and budget amendments. I see Director Navazio has joined us. We have, everybody has been at the, at, sitting over there this evening. Just Department of Public Works, they were the only, yeah, they didn't get. Yes, they had a break.
They're mentioned in this report.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Mayor Kate, members in the council. So as noted, this is a preliminary report on our year-end financial results. I would note that we are still in processing the year end, and we are, I would say, in the middle, hopefully, most of the way through our year-end audit. And as customary, you will see a report in early November. Along with our first quarter report for this fiscal year, we'll have the audited year-end financial results and a presentation from our auditor. So this report does cover some of the preliminary results. There are two actions, recommendations included in this report related to that. One is, as part of our year-end close process, we're requesting council action on a resolution to do a couple of what I would call minor amendments to the fiscal year 24-25 budget. We'll touch on those briefly. And then significantly, a second action is recommendation to adopt a resolution that would authorize essentially carrying over unexpended, unencumbered appropriations from the 24-25 fiscal year for specific purposes for work and projects that are continuing in the fiscal year. And that's in part the, what's driving the timing of bringing this report to you is to ask for your approval for that. So in the report, again, this is very preliminary, but we are showing revenues through the fiscal year ended June 30, 2025, at about 96% of the amended budget for the revenues, 187.2 million. Our expenditures on an all-funds basis at about 86% of the amended budget at 200.6 million in relation to the amended budget of 232. You'll see in a minute that a big portion of that are are funds that were appropriated as part of the capital budget for 24-25 that we will be requesting authorization to carry these forward. There's a little bit more detail in the report as it relates to the the general fund. The, I guess there's good news around on this one, however. A note that on the, on the revenues, the, again, unaudited revenues have come in slightly above budget, 2.3 million. There's still one payment from the state related to the annual ERAP payment that we're still awaiting, but about $2.4 million to the good on the revenue side. On the expenditure side, year-end results, 110.8 million. This is about 2 million, 2.1 million below budget. What is noteworthy about this result is that while it is good that we're within budget, this year's results reflect year-end expenditures that are a lot more in line with what our budgeted expenditures were. The council will recall that we've had a number of years where we've had five, six, seven, eight million dollars of underspending, primarily due to vacancies and number of personnel savings. So there's a table in the staff report that highlights just a little bit that within the general fund, the personnel expenditures were pretty much right on budget. And again, this is in comparison to having several million dollars of of savings in prior years. I would note two notable reasons for that. First is the fact that the city has been aggressive in filling vacant positions and staffing up and actually keeping our qualified staff on board, so we have a much lower vacancy rate. Also, the council will recall that in the 24-25 budget, we've actually built into the budget an estimated salary savings factor to account for sort of nominal turnover attrition and vacancy rate. That was important to actually be able to balance the budget on the heels of our labor agreements and putting some additional dollars. But this basically shows that the results came in within budget, accounting for the salary savings. And on the non-personnel side, again, preliminary results coming in about $2.1 million under budget. Again, that's a little bit less in quote-unquote savings, budgetary savings, than we've done, which is both evidence of the work that's being done and the resources that the council is authorizing actually being put to use in terms of programs and services. And also, I think, reflects, we'll see, one data point, I say, doesn't a trend make, but a general tightening of the budget in terms of our personnel and non-personnel expenditures, which I think on the one hand is a positive. It, should that trend continue? The only caution there is that the city has benefited from year-end favorable revenues and savings on the expenditure side to provide budget flexibility for one-time funding needs on a going-forward basis. And as the budget continues to sort of align better with what our actual projections are, we'll have more flexibility, or at least better predictability during the budget process, and maybe not so much budget flexibility at the end of the year. So it's kind of a two-edged proposition. I would note that of the roughly 2 million, 2.1 million dollars in general fund budgetary savings, that is the source funding for 1.4 million dollars in carryover appropriations that we're requesting this evening as part of the second resolution, and I'll touch on those in just a second. Before I get to the carryovers, we do have two year-end budget amendments that we're recommending, council authorized, as part of our year-end close. I think we brought these to council typically at the end of the fiscal year. Actually, I think Councilmember Hill, you had commented a year ago whether we would continue to see a relatively sizable list of adjustments. So they're, they're getting shorter. One is simply a transfer from our parking fund to the abandoned vehicle abatement fund. They're sort of, I guess, cousins of each other, but we've been spending a little bit more than the revenues in the abandoned vehicle abatement fund over the last couple of years, but there'd been a fund balance that would support that. We've exhausted the fund balance, and so we're, this is just an $11,000. But to make the auditors happy, we're asking the council to authorize the supplemental transfer. And then the, from a dollars and cents standpoint, the one that's most significant here, one of our internal service funds, the Employee Benefit Fund, is the fund where we also charge the, basically, when employees retire, separate from the city, and they're entitled to certain amount of sick and vacation leave balances been accrued, that comes out of the Employee Benefits Fund, where we're accounting for earned absences. This is actually an oversight in the 24-25 budget because the line item where we charge the leave payouts for employees who separated did not have the budget that it that it needed in there. So this is actually an appropriation from fund balance to. I will note that our finance manager suggested that because of its internal service fund, not an issue likely to be brought up with our auditors, but in an abundance of caution, we're bringing this for you this evening to take action so that we just can address that as part of our year-end. So the last part, again, is the unencumbered carryover. This is also in attachment to of your staff report. This is the exhibit to the resolution authorizing the unencumbered carryover. I would first summarize it by saying that we're requesting, council authorized, 14.262 million in carryovers. About 3.5 million is in operating budget, which includes the general fund. I'll touch on those briefly. And just going to the bottom line on the next slide, the capital budget, we're requesting 10.7 million. I would note here that when we adopted the current year budget at your meeting of June 2nd, you may recall that the capital improvement plan budget for this fiscal year is a little over 15 million, 15.3 million. And there was a question from the dais in comparison to the 24-25 capital budget, which was, I think, $33 million. And public works staff commented at that time that much of the work planned for the current fiscal year around capital is the ongoing work and the completion of work for projects that were funded in the in the prior year. So this is also, in general, an indication of us maybe right-sizing the capital budget on a year-to-year basis so that we're not just budgeting such that we end the year with 20, 30 million dollars of unspent, but actually looking to budget within the capital budget, funding that's available for the projects that are identified as priorities and the projects that we have the capacity to to deliver. So a couple other notes, I would just note that these unencumbered carryover appropriations really are limited, A, to the capital budget, where the funding was approved by the council for a specific reason, but we don't have a contract in place. for a specific reason, but we don't have a contract in place or purchase order that legally encumbers that. The operating budget, again, is primarily limited to funding that was included in the prior year budget for a specific purpose that we are still using those dollars. So an example will be our enterprise resource planning. We've done the financials. We're going to be doing HR and payroll. It was all funded in 2425, and so we're carrying forward those dollars. Some of our community engagement initiatives, kind of a lump sum allocation, was built into the 2425 budget with the intention that that would cover a couple of years' worth of activities. So again, we have 1.4 million dollars in the general fund. Looking at the operating budget, we're also carrying forward funding that was approved in our encampment resolution grant fund. This is for sanctioning campments and ongoing work related to our unhoused population. And so funds that were included in the budget that are still available, we're asking for the reappropriation. Again, 3.6 million in operating, 10.7 in in the capital budget. And the general fund recommendation of 1.42 million is supported by the savings that were demonstrated as of June 30. I said, no, 1.4 million in the general fund, I'm saying, is is that funding sources at 2 million. In total, it's 14 million. Couldn't put this all on one slide. So just wrapping up again, the action before the council this evening is, number one, to adopt or accept the report and then adopt a resolution authorizing amendments to the 2425 budget, as noted in attachment one. And then, secondly, adopting a resolution authorizing amendments to the current 2526 fiscal year budget to authorize a carryover of unencumbered appropriations for purposes specified totaling 14.262 million. And I would note that we did give a preview of this report to the finance subcommittee, actually at your, I think, August 6th meeting. And then you'll have a much more comprehensive report on the 2425 year-end in early November when we're back here with the auditors.
Thank you. Thank you, Director. Any questions? Vice Mayor? No. Kurt? Questions? Councilmember Hill?
Sorry, Mayor Kate, that I have a reputation for always asking.
We appreciate your questions.
Thank you.
Of that, we appreciate them.
Thank you, Director Navazio, again, for the, not only the subcommittee presentation, but this updated. The only thing that came up that's different was the employee benefits fund for 2425 needing amendment. Did, was the same, is it possible that the same error was made when we did the 2526? Did we look at that, or is it, or is it just a one-time error, do you think?
Yeah, no, I think, I think what we're looking at with the 2526 is whether or not there's just a sufficient funding. And we, I believe, it's probably not in the first quarter, but when we're back to the council with the mid-year report, we'll be in a position to sort of project where we're at. And if there's any adjustments that need to be made, we won't wait until year-end.
My second question, and this may be ticky tack, but when I see abandoned vehicle fund going, approaching $200,000 in a year, I have to say that was, maybe I shouldn't be surprised. When a, maybe you don't know the answer to this because you're in the finance side, but when a vehicle is abandoned, the cost is to move it somewhere, have it, I assume, have it crushed or what have you. Is it, I was just surprised to see that it's almost $200,000 for abandoned vehicles.
So I think I can give a sort of partial answer. The entire budget in the abandoned vehicle is a, I'm going to be guessing here, but just looking at the dollars, it's something under 1 FTE within the parking division. So there's just a staff person that is dedicated to dealing with abandoned vehicles and the towing and the recovery. We do collect revenues from that, but historically, the parking fund where most of the revenue for that operation comes into does, we do have in the budget. So out of about $180,000 budget, about 80, it's about half and half between revenues that it collects, and the other half is from other more general parking fines. So we just need to increase the amount that the parking fund is supporting by a small amount.
Thank you. Thank you for.
Provide more information.
Providing sunlight to that.
Yeah.
Thank you. I'll open up the public comment on this item. If you have anything you'd like to share with the council, now's your opportunity. As always, you're welcome, but not required to say your name and what part of San Rafael you live in.
Good evening, City Council. It is nice to see you. Glad that you're feeling well, City Manager. Process question. The very first slide you showed had recommendations, and it, I just, forgive me if I do this rudely, but it sounds like you're making a recommendation and you're saying you should take it. Or is somebody else writing the report, and who's making the recommendation? So that's, I'm sorry, if, it just seems like you're saying, I'm, you know, you get the, that's the first question. I thought I heard that there has been money allocated this year, 30 or plus, almost a third of the budget for the city's year, that's being carried over to next year. So you've allocated a third of your budget this year that you're not going to, you didn't get an opportunity to spend either through resources not being available or timing issues, and that gets moved over. And that seemed like a lot of money, and I didn't know if that, how that affects next year's budget. Does that year, next year budget mean it's only two-thirds as much? And that's the essence of the question. It's just those numbers moving around were confusing to me, so I just wanted to ask. All right, thank you.
Thank you. Good questions. Anyone else like to provide some input or comments? Not seen anyone. We'll close the public comment. So one is a staff process question. It's not just this report, it's really any report that comes to the city council. I don't know if the, you wanted the city manager to answer that because it really is not just this item. And then the second one is about the the carryover fund, very specific to Director.
So in this case, the staff report is authored by the finance director, submits it through a process to the city manager's office whereby our office, myself, signs off on all of those staff reports moving forward and being in the public agenda packet. Does that answer the question?
And then the recommendations. Yeah, the staff recommendations.
The staff recommendation is the finance director's recommendation, which is being made to me, which is being made to you.
And in this case, too, it did go to the finance subcommittee as well, so there was another public opportunity that informed the staff report.
Well, that's it. Yeah, I wouldn't have come to you if not sort of signed off by the city manager. I would just note in the context of the presentation and, you know, each of the agenda items has a subject and a recommendation. So in my presentations, I kind of start with the recommendation so that we're clear what the.
We appreciate that.
As opposed to going through a whole presentation, then saying, here's what the staff recommendation. So it's just to tee up what we're asking the council and then bookend the presentation with.
No, I think that's helpful. And then the second question was regarding just more clarity around the carryover fund.
Yeah, so just to clarify, we, a lot of numbers throwing around. In the 2425 budget, as is noted in the staff report, the the all funds budget is actually 232 million. What we're asking to carry over is 14 million, which is 6% of the all funds budget. So 30 million was the all funds capital budget for last year. I think the reference to 30% might be noting, because you're following budget pretty closely, we have about a hundred-plus million dollar general fund budget, but the the capital, there's very little general fund in the capital budget. So yes, the capital budget, the math, it's 30% of the general fund budget, but it's a much smaller percent of the overall budget, and we're carrying over about 6% of the of the all funds budget with this action.
Thank you. Thank you. I will look to my colleagues to see if they have any additional questions on this item or some comments. Yes, please, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
Ready for comment?
Yes, please.
The Director has, as usual, presented a very thorough, detailed report that shows all of the required information. As I'm stepping back, though, the strategic message I'm getting is that we are going to have to adjust ourselves to a more precise budgeting process and pay more attention to these details because we're not going to have the flexibility that we've enjoyed in the past on our expenditure side and then on the, and the the carryover expenditure. Our planning needs to be elevated to better align with the correct years when it will be expended. So I guess what I'm hearing is a strategic call to arms on the budget and to, for us to sharpen our pencils and put on our thinking caps and be ready to focus on on details more than we have in the past.
If I may just respond to that, Councilmember Bushy, you're spot on in your understanding what Director Navazio is trying to convey here. I think we will be continuing to keep the finance subcommittee updated very regularly as things move forward. The things that, and we all know this, but it's worth saying every time we talk about the budget, the federal uncertainty is another layer of risk that we have never experienced in local government. So we already know we've had one grant rescinded. We don't have a ton of federal grant funding. However, we do have some, and when it goes away, then it fills a hole in something we can't do, or then we've got to defer and, you know, make changes to the budget. The other thing I wanted to mention is that in the next month, we'll be bringing forward the strategic plan, priority area work plans, and all of those initiatives are aligned with budget. So just kind of as a reminder that there'll, there'll be, you know, regular conversations that will help make sure that the community and the council is really attuned to this pencil sharpening that we're doing and that we're just, we're down to a margin that new and emerging priorities, there'll have to be an actual trade-off because we really don't have the resources to add more to the plate from a capacity standpoint or a financial standpoint. So just trying to manage those expectations.
Thank you. Thank you. Any additional comments? Yeah, Councilmember Hill.
I would just build on the Vice Mayor's comments that this strategic decision to make certain that we could fill all these positions was critical for our staff. I would, I would venture to say that staff, especially during the pandemic and emerging from the pandemic, were under immense strain to deliver services in an understaffed position across all departments. So I still think that was, that continues to be the right decision that we made. And to support the Vice Mayor's comments further, it will require that we have to be much more fine-toothed in our approach. And to the city manager's comments, that the exercise of trade-off is going to be a very real thing. We cannot just absorb inbound requests without making certain doing a puts and takes exercise each time. Appreciate that. Thank you very much, Director Navazio.
Thank you. Thank you for those comments. And again, hats off to you and your team. I am always, I get more and more impressed about how we are having this alignment and is a tightening, but it also enables us to be very, very transparent and have the accountability that we're all striving for. So, so thank you for all the work to bring this this evening. And as you pointed out, there are three separate motions required, so.
I'll take the first.
Okay, Vice Mayor, go ahead.
I move that we accept the report presenting preliminary fiscal year 202425 unaudited financial results for the fiscal year ended June 30, 2025.
Second? Moved and seconded by two people at once, so City Clerk will work that one out. Do you want us to go through all the motions and then we'll do the.
I'll do roll call after each.
Okay. Next motion, Councilmember Micah, why don't you go ahead?
Oh, I'll do the roll call now.
Oh, you do the roll call now?
Yeah.
Okay, roll call, please. Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedon Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye.
That motion carries 5-0. Okay, Councilmember Micah, why don't you do the next one?
Okay, thank you. So I'll make a motion to adopt a resolution adopting amendments to the City of San Rafael budget for fiscal year 202425 for the purpose of confirming authorized appropriations and transfers.
Your second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, roll call, please. Vice Mayor Bushy.
Aye.
Councilmember Hill.
Aye.
Councilmember Kurtz.
Aye.
Councilmember Yedon Scalati.
Aye.
Mayor Kate.
Aye.
That motion carries 5-0. Thank you so much, Director. Before we adjourn our meeting, we have open time for public expression. This is the opportunity for the public to comment on topics that were not on this evening's agenda. I will now open that public comment. Welcome. Mayor Kate and Councilmember Salama here. I have on the com, just make announcements on the four hats that I wear, and I want to thank the city council, excuse me, the city manager for mentioning the ember stamp that's happening this weekend because two of my hats will be there. The FAST team, which is the financial abuse specialist team, will be tabling. And we table there because we get a lot of foot traffic, even though we're not about putting out fires or, you know, making your house safe necessarily. And, but we educate folks about the current scams and, most importantly, how to report those, the various methods for reporting. The second is age-friendly, San Rafael, the information about who we are and what we do and what we will be doing, that'll be information also at that tabling. My last two hats, for those who would like to know, the continuation of the excessive force trial of Officer Nail will be on Tuesday, September the 16th, at 9 o'clock at Civic Center Court. I believe it's Room K, but it's the one that's way down the hall. And lastly, my most important, Marin Senior Fair will be on Wednesday, September the 17th, starting at 9:00 in the morning, and that would be at the Veterans Hall, you know, down the Avenue of the Flags, the little thing down there. And that's all that I wanted to say. And I really enjoyed the meeting tonight. I appreciated the efficiency, getting through different things. I just wanted to say, I don't know if that gentleman's question was answered. He asked if you have, for example, one-fourth that you're carrying over is that added to your current budget, or is it becomes, it's added to three-quarters of a budget? That was his question. Rather than a whole budget and adding a fourth, get what I'm saying? That was really his question. Thank you. Thank you for your close listening, and I'll point out that we actually have a banner talking about the senior fair in downtown San Rafael, so we are helping to promote that. Any, any other public, any other public comment before I adjourn the meeting?
No, he can't go home. I just want to bring this to your attention. I'm starting to get a lot of mail, and I received this, I don't know if anyone received this mail today. And I was like, oh, look, I'll open this up, what will it say? And it's, it's, it's basically saying, oh, your gas prices are going to increase to $6, $7, and that's it. That's all it says. This is a scare tactic, obviously. And I, and I see, I saw this one today, as I mentioned, it actually frightened me. And I've been getting others about the efforts by Newsom to redistrict in response to Texas and that whole crazy story. But it's just affecting the community, so I want to bring it to your attention because if a lot of people are getting these kinds of messages and becoming unhappy because of misinformation or real information, you should know that. That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else like to address the council?
Okay, hi, I'm Nicole. I live in downtown San Rafael, and I'm speaking today to bring more attention towards bike lanes on Point San Pedro Road. For me, my bike is a primary means of transport. It's not just a hobby, and I commute to work every day on my bike along Point San Pedro. I know these roads and regulations take time to change, but it's really unsafe for the bike lane to cut in and out so much, especially on a road with, there's multiple schools along it and students ride on it, too. But it feels like we're sacrificing bike safety for street parking of just a few parked cars. It's not very full, and the bike lane just cuts in and out all the time. But more specifically, the problem I'm having is in front of San Pedro Elementary School during drop-off time, so maybe 7:45. I know these roads and regulations take time to change, but it's really unsafe for the bike lane to cut in and out so much, especially on a road with, there's multiple schools along it and students ride on it too. But it feels like we're sacrificing bike safety for street parking of just a few parked cars. It's not very full and the bike lane just cuts in and out all the time. But more specifically, the problem I'm having is in front of San Pedro Elementary School during drop-off time, so maybe 7:45, 8:15 AM. I know drop-off time is always hectic and that's kind of unavoidable. But there are multiple parents every day disregarding the laws that are already in place. It's a blind downhill curve with trees, so I can't see these cars that are parking in the bike lane and ignoring the clear signage for no parking. So it's a dangerous merge because the laws aren't being enforced. So I'm asking to maybe monitor the situation more. We could also be ticketing these people that are just ignoring no parking signs. And it's every day. It's just really unsafe for everyone involved. I've already talked to Public Works. I put in a ticket and I emailed Traffic Engineers, whatever that email was. But I just want to bring it to attention because it's not safe for me, for other bikers, for even the cars, just so much stopping and starting. And they're in a no-parking area. Thank you.
Thank you, Nicole. And we'll pass along your comments to the school board because they are part of one of the agencies. And I'll also comment that our Bicycle Plan Advisory Committee, BPAC, those meetings are open and we'd love to have you join them. You can find out online when the next one is. So good comments. Not seeing any other further comments this evening. This meeting is adjourned.